We, the Bangalap people, welcome you to our country. We are the lawful inhabitants of this peninsula for thousands of generations. We are part of this land on which we stand, part of the waters that flow in and around. We are part of the dreaming stories that are connected. The full awareness of oneness with the land and waters will ensure a future for the children of tomorrow. Ngariña, wunaguru Bangala mirña, ura da melbu. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome everybody tonight to our meeting. In delivering our new traditional oath as we do every meeting now, we, the Waila council members, commit to serving the community of which we are a part and will work together diligently and collaboratively to create a prosperous future in which we can all share. Item three being a special meeting we don't have for, considering we had a meeting last week, we don't have any new avotee notices until the regular meeting. We have three apologies tonight, councillor Knox, councillor Campbell and councillor Inglis. We have no leave of absence. Item six, council member and executive declarations, 5.1, conflicts of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest they need to declare? CEO.
Mayor, I confirm that I've got a material interest in relation to item 20.1.1 on tonight's agenda, which is to do with the cashing out of annual leave. At the time of that item, I'll provide a short personal explanation to the councillors and then I'll leave the meeting during the discussion and voting on that, madam.
Thank you, CEO. Any further conflicts of interest in that case? We move on, 5.2, gifts and benefits. Do we have any gifts and benefits to declare? No gifts and benefits, thank you. Item six, minutes of the previous meetings, there are meal. Item seven, matters adjourned later on the table, 7.1. You still have the matter of the EP Local Government Association notice information from the District Council of Alloksin to do with great white sharks, as we have reported previously at the EPLGA meeting in Woodna later this week. We will then bring back more information and the elected body will make a decision at our next meeting. Item eight, reputations, 8.1, the Chair of our Audit and Risk Committee, Grant Strawbridge. Hi, Grant.
How are you, Mayor?
Good. Over to you.
Thank you. I just want to talk to the council tonight about the long-term financial plan. It's a matter we discussed at the most recent Order and Risk Committee and the committee felt it appropriate that rather than just having the minutes presented on this item, that I would talk to the council in relation to what we're seeing as critical matters in relation to the long-term financial plan. So our minutes are included in the council pack. What we are viewing the long-term plan as more of a short-term plan because it doesn't represent any future potential activities and uplifts. So it's very much short-term. We do note that there are two parts to it, council as well as the airport, but we can't ignore the airport, although we can report on it separately. We've got to look at how do we turn that around because in the end, council needs to fund that as well. What is very important, I think, for the council is to read the ASCOZA report. I think they gave a very good summary around the matters that we should be considering and the issues that we should be addressing now, both in the short term to set ourselves up for the long term. So I do encourage all council members to read that and take out the key takeaways from that report as well. What we are seeing as a committee is that continued increase to rate payers over the various years in the long-term model are not sustainable. To have increases of 1.6% above CPI, we don't think it's something the rate payers will accept. Also that the focus needs to be brought back on the first three years of the financial model because we can project out 10 years, but if you can control 10 years out, you're very good. And normally for corporates, it's a three-year view with a longer-term view still there, but a little fuzzier, but control sits around the three years and more importantly, around the one year. We feel that we need to be brought back into a positive position sooner and we need to make sure that by getting back into that positive position sooner, we can leverage the investment in the city when it's right. And we've had presentations from the Premier over the weekend, although a little scant on how it's all going to hang together, but they are putting a lot of money into the area and we need to be match ready for when that occurs. We feel there needs to be a focus on renewal only in the short term rather than new developments, given the lack of resources and this is financial resources that are available. Because not only by building new do you have to build it, you have to service it and it's that ongoing service cost that is impacting on the council. Cost containment in the short term should be a priority as well as the focus of moving anything out of the long-term model or the activities that will not make us match fit to make sure that we are ready rather than just always dealing with legacies and potentially giving rate payers a legacy they have to fund for a long time in the future. It's interesting looking at ASCOZA and what they said and a couple of key points. They felt that the council will be better positioned from a financial and asset sustainability perspective if we focused on renewal of existing asset stock rather than increasing investment in new and upgrade assets. We concur with that view and have concur with that view from day one. The other key takeaway from ASCOZA is they state there appears to be no clear strategy for reducing the rate burden on the community, which has relatively lower access to economic resources than other South Australian council regions. If the council's most likely scenario regarding population growth does not happen, the commission notes that this shifts the risk to the community. And when we talk community, we're talking rate payers who bear similar characteristics to that of a monopoly firm shifting risk to customers they are more equipped to manage, i.e. all worse, Coles pushing the cost of groceries back on the consumer. And the final one is they note that the community concerns when the 23-24 budget process, and those concerns were around further rising rates, affordability, cost of service provision and the preference to review or reduce expenditure. So they are very much aligned with the narrative that has been coming out of the Audit Risk Committee to the council. Mayor, if you will indulge me, I wouldn't mind just talking through my perspective as the Chair of Audit and Risk Committee in relation to my observations, if you are comfortable with that.
Certainly, certainly, Grant.
Thanks, Mayor. Look, I'm going to be blunt and make you feel a little bit uncomfortable and I'm going to do that on purpose. I feel that there is no strategic plan, no key result areas, no link to the financial, long-term financial plan. Normally, a long-term financial plan is the outcome, the financial outcome of a strategic plan. I do note that you do have a vision, you do have a mission and you've got organisational goals and activities, but they don't hang together in a strategic plan. So without that plan, what you are seeing is a rolling budget as a strategic plan. And what we are seeing in that rolling budget is significant volatility on the projected position. So we've seen a lot of negative come through, adding additional costs. So with volatility, you normally build contingency into your budget. Therefore, you expect an even higher financial performance because of the volatility. So you can take into account that volatility in your numbers. There is no blueprint or strategic architecture going forward. If you looked at Discovery when they came and presented to council, they had their strategy on a page. So if we look at our most recent activity, we ought to ask the question, where does the potential development site prospectus that's just been released fit with the overall strategic blueprint? So how are we actually going to evaluate what's going to come across our table through issuing that prospectus? I feel that our broader approach, as being displayed, is hope. Hope is not a strategy. We need to form that view to dictate our future. I reinforce on the long-term financial plan. If we've got rates of CPI plus 1.6 and we're saying the plus 1.6 is for sustainability in projects, it's not sustainable. Affordability risk is being passed on to rate payers. So if we look at the debt we've got and we're going to incur, that is going to be passed on to future generations. In the end, somebody has to pay. If we look at recurring revenue, what are the assumptions to move us back into a strong financial position? Because yes, we can deal with costs, but what is this upside? Let's paint that picture, understand what needs to be in place to get the outcome rather than just having a series of numbers projected out based on increased rate payer cost to get us into that perspective. So if we go to cost management and borrowing management, we've talked about selling assets. That's going to help us going forward. And again, I'm saying we can't ignore the airport, so we've got to roll that into our numbers. So if we look at the next three years, 24, 25, 26, we're in operating deficit of around 3.5 million, 1.7 million and just under a million dollars. And even 27, 28, we're still in deficit. So if we're saying, okay, we're going to sell some assets to improve our performance, well, in each of those years, our outstanding borrowings sitting around for 24 is about 22 million, 25 is 25 million and 20 year 26 is 24 million. If we sold all of those assets, say 25 million dollars worth, it's only going to put us back into a break-even position because our financing costs are only about a million dollars, 1.2 million dollars a year. So the land sales or sell-the-farm strategy will help you short term. It's not going to fix the underlying issue because we will still be negative and we still don't have that recurring revenue going forward. So if you sell the farm, you can't do the crops. So the key here is around wherever you come from and the borrowing side of it or the sale of assets will help, but it doesn't fix the problem. It delays the issues that we've got to deal with. So key for us going forward is going to be around, well, what are we building and how are we going to service it? So I sit there and say, well, here's the issues. And the question back to me should be, well, what can we do or what should we be looking at? Mine would be very much narrow the focus and the priority for the organisation. Accountability on financial performance should be paramount and let's just look at running the business purely operational. As ASCOZA says as well, focus on your current patch and get yourself match ready for the future. I do think there is a need for strategic planning to be in place externally facilitated. It's very hard for Justin and his group to facilitate planning and come up with everything. External people help that thought process and would help the council as well. And I think also it helps us understand the strategic cycle we're in. I acknowledge that the council is not a corporate and it operates differently, but there are some fundamentals around, well, this is the economic or the strategic cycle we're in. Normally you run through, you're either in a start-up as a company or you're in turnaround or you're just realigning or you're just sustaining success. We're in a start-up turnaround environment at the moment and we need to know, well, what behaviours and activities do we need to display in that environment? How agile do we need to be? And that final part is around the federal state government. How do we get inside the tent? Because Malanouskas is talking about, well, this is the plan. Well, what's in it for us? What do we need to do to make sure that we're prosecuting our strategic plan back on the government? Get out the outcome rather than just sitting there waiting for, here is a piece of news, what are we going to do with it? So stakeholder management is going to be key there. So Phil, that's my play at the moment around, there is an opportunity for us. I just think we need to skin it down at the moment and get ourselves match fit from a cost point of view because there is significant volatility and uncertainty about future at the moment.
Thank you, Grant. Some very wise words there. Do we have anybody that's got any questions? Do you have to take questions, Grant?
Certainly, fire them at me.
Councillor Ordor.
Thank you, Grant. Absolutely timely to hear that sort of guidance. And to fire the first one at you, I was, when you said, you know, we should have questions for you, you took the words out of my mouth. So selling assets doesn't fix long-term problems. And then the question is, what are we building and how are we going to service it? Can I just clarify, so you're referring to the ASCOZA report and you're talking about narrowing the focus and the priority business and focusing purely on the operations of it? So and the words, just our patch. So what happens, I guess, noticing the difference between a corporate and the council way of running a so-called business for the community? Where's the balance with things like a foreshore development, any sort of upgrades? Is that kind of, sorry guys, no holidays at the moment because we need to pay off some debt and we're not going to be doing that by selling off assets? Is that kind of the vibe I'm getting?
Foreshore is a good example of saying, why do you need to build it and maintain it? And can you afford it? So what is it going to add to the organisation? Yes, it's going to be a nicer city. What do we think that's going to do from the point of view of bringing families, couples, children, different types of employment into the city by building that? So there's got to be an economic outcome for doing that activity or else what you're doing is using rate payer money to build an environment for everybody that the rate payers will need to pay. So every time you build an asset, what is that going to do for the community? And it doesn't always have to be a financial outcome. It can be a social outcome because social outcomes indirectly have financial outcomes as well. But each decision that the council is making and each time they're spending money, the question should be, why is this in the best interest of rate payers? And why is this in the best interest of our community to spend that dollar? And it's no different to what industry super funds are mandated to do now. Every dollar they spend, they need to justify, how's it enhanced member outcome? Each dollar we spend, it's how's it enhanced our community outcome going forward? And what does it mean for rate payers?
Thank you very, very much. So social outcomes are okay and I guess I'm interested to know how, does that show up on the balance sheet? I mean, when we're looking at things like the foreshore, for example, so we would suggest, and I haven't found the numbers and I haven't seen the anticipated numbers, but I'm assuming that's going to boost tourism. I'm assuming that's going to enhance the livability of the city and it's going to attract the workforce, which is going to have a flow-on effect. So is what you're suggesting to put a number on that, at least have an educated guess and put that into a strategic plan where we can see the numbers and go, well, this is how much it's going to cost. This is why we're building it. Here's the potential return and make the decision from that point?
That's standard business practice. You're spot on. That's the path you'd go there. And sometimes you'd make a decision, even if you can't put your finger on the hard numbers as well. But if you sit back and say, well, we built the jetty, okay. What was the current position and what was the future position and have we achieved that? Because we are taking on debt and in the end, somebody's going to have to service and fund that debt going forward. Now, some organisations will bring on assets that they'll get further use at down the track. So you may invest in the future, but you know that you're going to get that financial outcome down the track. But at the moment, the rate payers are wearing the risk and they're wearing it through higher rates above CPI. The question is, is that sustainable for them? You know, will we be in a job if we keep putting the rates up? Because at some stage they're going to say, well, show us the money. You know, what is the outcome you're getting for us here? So that comes back to that, what is the blueprint going forward? That's when with that blueprint, and I'm not talking about architectural drawings, I'm talking something broader than that. Well, look, this is the current position we've got. Let's get ourselves in order. Let's get match fit rather than doing things that sit outside those parameters. Let's just get this piece going. We know the federal government, state government are going to do this. What does it mean for us? How do we want to influence our future going forward rather than just being order takers and the given, and given things? Good examples around Discovery, great opportunity for us. They want to invest in our town. Okay, 32 beds. What does that mean for us? Is that meaning additional operating costs for the council or will that mean new revenue? Again, with the 102 beds they're talking about, what does that mean for us going forward? How do we leverage from that opportunity? If it's key for the city going forward, how do we deal with the stakeholder management on that to get the outcome that we need? So it sits, every decision then sits around with that broader plan or the decision-making matrix we've set up around, well, it needs to fit this for us to get an outcome from that. So yeah, you're spot on in relation to how you go through the assessment process.
Thanks, Grant. Any further questions? I think that looks about it, Grant. But thank you so much for that because yes, we know we've got some issues ahead and you've certainly reinforced what we do have to do. So thank you very much. If there's anything else you wanted to say?
Thank you for that, Phil. Thank you for the opportunity for the committee to give the combined message back to council.
No, it's certainly appreciated. We take it on notice, that's for sure. Thanks a lot, Grant.
Cheers.
Cheers. Moving on to item nine, petitions, we have none. 10 public question time, we have no questions. Now, it's on the agenda, but we're not necessarily expecting them. Seeing this was an extra meeting, we do have council member activities. So we're quite happy if you want to get those in for the next meeting. You'll read that there's none from the mayor either. You can read warm feast next meeting. Item 12, presentations, we have 4.1 from Helping Hand. Chris Stewart is on the line. Been waiting for a while there. From Helping Hand, read our age care. It was recalled some time ago, a question was asked about how is age care going in Waila? Welcome, Chris, and thank you very much for joining us. Chris, can you hear? Chris, can you hear us? Can you hear us, Chris? You are on mute according to our images.
Yeah, can you hear me now, Phil?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, I just, when we changed over the, I lost my sound for some reason. So everyone can hear me okay?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, let me just try one other thing. And can you still hear me okay, Phil?
Yes.
Okay, brilliant. All right. My apologies for that. Thank you very much for having me here today. It's a real pleasure to be able to give an update on how we're progressing with the Waila Age Care integration after almost two years of working in the great city of Waila and the regional area. We're really very pleased. So Mayor, can you just advise, how long do we have? So I stick to your timeframes.
20 minutes?
Oh, that's plenty. Look, I've got a very short presentation and then very happy to take questions. So what I thought I'd do is I'll just share the screen and we'll take it from there. Okay, do you have a nice picture there of the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Okay, so I'd also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge that we are meeting on the lands. You're in the Bangala, the Bangala lands and we're here on Garner Land in Adelaide and pay our respects to elders past, present and emerging. And we, I really enjoyed that, welcome to acknowledgement of country that you showed earlier. It was excellent. What I'd like to do is just touch on our progress over the past two years, talk a little bit about our positive ageing precinct concept plans that were shared late last year with a number of stakeholders and then open it up for any questions and discussion. This is our strategic plan. Our vision, we are, it's go through until 2025. And so we're in the midst now of planning for our strategic plan for beyond 2025. But there's three strategic pillars there that we're very focused on to achieve our vision of being the most trusted and exceptional partner in age care and wellbeing services with our mission being that we create communities and experiences to enable older people to live their best lives. And we see Waila as just one of those communities that we've taken a lot of effort and investment into to ensure that those communities can continue to thrive for older people. And in particular, as it relates to Waila and delivering outstanding care and service, providing excellent clinical care was a huge focus for us when we stepped into this, into this service and developing leading service across our residential care homes. And in particular, we also have a very big home care enterprise. So delivering care in people's homes and maintaining our strong commitment to regional communities where we have a third of our business is something that we hold very, take very seriously. Just a little bit about us for those of you who don't know. Helping Hand is a not-for-profit organisation. It's got a 70-year-old history in South Australia and we are part of the Uniting Church network. We're governed by a professional board of directors and we have over 2,000 employees. And as I said, a third of those are in regional South Australia. 930 older South Australians live in our residential care homes and over 3,000 people living in their own homes receive services from us. As you can see, we're based all the way through Port Lincoln, Waila, Peary, Jamestown, Clare and then have a very large presence in the northern suburbs of Adelaide. Past two years, I think it's worth reflecting that Helping Hand came to Waila taking on a service in the form of Kindred Living that was under a lot of stress. There was multiple compliance failures. There had been severe regulatory intervention, including sanctions, which means you couldn't take new clients into the service and they come with severe financial penalties. There'd been a lot of staff turnover. I think it's fair to say the public relations around the age care service was at a pretty bad state and the community had lost trust and moreover, it was in great financial difficulty. So when we were approached by government to help out, we entered into a 12-month management agreement that was supported by the government that allowed us to really stabilise the ship. We restored the financial performance. We gradually achieved 100% compliance in the clinical care and age care standards. We put in dedicated management support. We flew in some of our best people from Adelaide to stabilise the service. And in 2023, we were very pleased to say that both age care homes obtained re-accreditation for three years and we've restored staff morale. And we took it over in February 2022. With staff engagement was at 66%, it's now up to 83% at its last data point and pulse check in November 2023. There's no doubt that workforce is still a challenge. But I would have to say that compared to around the country where I think 1,200 beds were closed last year mainly in regional Australia, this is a real success story and one that I think that both the council and ourselves and the community can be very proud of and look forward to a really bright future. We're able to keep people in their own homes. We're able to keep people safe in our care homes and we're able to protect over 200 jobs. And that's what creating a community is all about. And I do thank the council's support during what was some very challenging times, particularly from Mayor and CEO, Justin, who were very supportive of our negotiations to work with government to ensure a good outcome that led to an ongoing financially sustainable position as well as a care and service delivery position. I wanted to give you just a little bit of an update on how the homes are performing and the services are being delivered. As you know, in 2021, Annie Lockwood closed. We don't have, we have no intentions of reopening that as an age care home, but we do have intention to repurpose it for the community. And in fact, I've already started doing that where we are renting the rooms to SA Health for their nurses and we're also using it for our own staff because as you know, there's a severe lack of housing. We operate both NDIS packages and home care packages. And currently in the residential care homes, we're sitting at around about 97%, which is, which is high and really allows very little change or as we, when people come and go from the home, it's generally, 97% suggests that you're pretty much full. In the past 12 months, we've had 56 applications for residential places and we have placed 51 of those people. In the past 12 months, we've had fifty-six applications for residential places and we have placed fifty-one of those people. So that's a ninety, over ninety percent placement rate, which is really very strong. And Helping Hand does pride itself on taking, I guess, clients that perhaps others wouldn't. We're very proud of that. We think we've got good clinical protocols in place and risk management protocols in place to allow us to take on residents that others might not. There is a higher than average aging demographic in the Wiler area. And we think that demand is likely to continue. And as I said, 1,100 beds of home, 1,100 beds have been closed in the past nine months. And of all the new ones being built, of which there's only 500, they've all been in metropolitan cities. So Wiler, as we know, that Yiltana in particular needs a lot of work. And all of our residents are on quite high concessional and supported fees. So there's still a lot of government support, which means these homes and these services are break even at best. But we've got, you know, longer term plans to help make that a much more sustainable venture. Alternative residential care, as we, as we know, our away in Port Lincoln or Port Augusta. And then you've got some very small operations as part of the hospitals in Cleve and Kimber and Cow. So really, we could not afford for this to fail. And 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 so far, so good. I just want to talk quickly about our plan. So Copper House Court, we realise that we need to add more capacity given the aging demographic. And so Copper House Court is one of the age care homes and we're looking to do significant capital works there that will allow us to add another six rooms and also improve the dining areas and back of house facilities. So that is one part of the development that we're looking to increase capacity in. And the other part of development is Yiltana. Yiltana currently is not, is not contemporary. There is one bath in parts, it's got a lovely new memory support unit. Parts of the home also have six or eight older people sharing a bathroom. No en suite facilities, shared double rooms. It's really not good. You wouldn't want, really wouldn't want your mum or dad to go in there in this sort of contemporary world that we're in. So we're looking to completely replace all of the shared rooms with singles with en suites and in the process add another two rooms. So that will take capacity overall from 115 to 125 beds, so almost a 10% increase. And we have been invited by the government to apply for a special grant of some $17 million that will allow us to do these renovations. And we are hoping to hear some positive news on that shortly. And then in terms of Annie Lockwood, this is conceptual at this stage, I would say, but notwithstanding the very exciting announcement that you had over the weekend in relation to the development of a cabin accommodation for fly-in, fly-out workers, which we, which we obviously welcome. This accommodation also is going to be repurposed to allow a community hub where we can provide community services such as allied health, social support, maybe some church services, other sorts of services in in this area. And then looking to convert and retain the bedrooms so that we can accommodate contractors to do some of the works that I've just alluded to. And in addition, provide housing to our staff. Because we do still have a lot of staff coming from Adelaide or from interstate. So that's quite exciting, conceptual at the moment, but we are currently scoping out the community hub, which is really very exciting. And then, of course, the beautiful foreshore. I think this is just the most remarkable real estate along this, along this foreshore. And Kindred Living slash Helping Hand has been blessed to be provided with this vacant piece of land that adjacent to the care home where we really believe we can create what we're calling a positive aging precinct. Looking to build retirement living, looking to create, you know, hopefully with the council's support, a beautiful pathway that, you know, connects the age care home and the retirement living all the way through to the Discovery Park and the and the jetty. And you can just imagine it being a tremendous walkway and thoroughfare and really bring vitality and life through both housing, care and accommodation solutions. And so we have started a very conceptual plan and we're about to embark on feasibility. We've just appointed someone who is going to lead the feasibility project to see if we can produce up to forty-eight retirement villages. So people, older people who are looking to downsize or have that peace of mind where they're living closer to the age care home. Because in our experience, what we understand, what we know is that couples will often want to move very close to the age care home and then be able to visit their loved one in the care home or live independently in a retirement livage, in a retirement village unit where they know they can access services as they need. And that's in fact already happening. As you know, there are, there's about 12 retirement living units in between Yiltana and Annie Lockwood. So again, conceptual at this stage, but we are committed. And we are really going down the bar and we look forward to the council's support and the community's support as we start to look to building what's a really very exciting positive aging precinct. So, you know, you can imagine, you know, looking from above the oceans over here, you can imagine looking from above, you know, retirement living units here, especially designed for older people to age in place, a community centre. That that could potentially be a childcare centre up up here to support staff. You've got your beautiful care home that would be fully redesigned and stretching across into a another community centre and accommodation options for staff or other vulnerable people in the community. So it's a very ambitious plan, but we do think this will support older people in Wiler for decades. And we're really excited to be able to talk to you about this tonight, bring this to life in the future and very happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that, Chris. We certainly appreciate it. And you've certainly got a team here that I think I can say is well behind what you're trying to achieve. Do we have any, yes, councillor Torey.
Thanks for that, Chris. It was a really great presentation. I'm knowing you're saying at the moment that it's all conceptual designs within all of these stages. So at Copper House and Kana and Lockwood, the foreshore, do you have any timeframes on any of it?
Yeah, thank you very much for your question. So we've certainly got architectural designs and plans have been done for both of the care homes. So they are pretty much ready to go. So, you know, the government has been quite slow with its grant processing, but I had some messaging today that's giving me a lot of hope that we'll be able to apply for that sometime in March. Obviously, then it has to go through the government formal approval process, council approval process and feasibility study, not feasibility study, and basically all the paperwork. And so then we'd be set to go, you know, all going well. Well, let's say, you know, where are we now? We're in March twenty-four. I would hope by the end of the year, all going well, we'd be, we'd be starting to break ground and and do those works within the homes. I think that would be very exciting. In terms of the Annie Lockwood development, as I said, we're starting to actually scope that out now as we speak. It's a relatively minor spend just just now, but we are scoping it out as we speak. And then the big piece, the retirement living concept that would bring everything together, that's currently very early stages. As you could see, those drawings were very, very high level. And we're going through feasibility at the moment. So you'd have to sort of say 12 to 18 months before we started breaking ground on the retirement living development. What we do know is that there's a high demand for retirement living. And so some years ago, before we came into Wiler, Kindred Living had actually sold a number of retirement living units off the plan. And so we think that there is a very good appetite and market for retirement living. So, yeah, I hope that answers the question.
Thanks, Chris. Any further, councillor?
Yes, thanks for the presentation. It's exciting stuff. Just a question. What is the average waiting time for people accommodated outside of Wiler to return to Wiler?
That is information I don't have and I'm not sure if I can access that information. I do know that we have taken people from outside Wiler. We've had people come from Port Augusta down into Wiler. But I I'm happy to go in and see if we can get any further information and distribute that out of session if you like.
Thank you. Yes, thanks for that question. Appreciate it. Any further questions? Councillor Borla, thanks, Chris, for the awesome presentation. Very, very exciting times. How do you take on residents that others may not? I'm just interested to know how you, how you do that and why others wouldn't take them on.
Yeah, it's a really good question and I appreciate it with. So what I mean by that is that we probably have a higher, what I would call, risk tolerance. So because we've invested a lot of money into our systems, our processes and our clinical staff, we feel more confident in taking on people, say, with advanced dementia. We feel a bit more confident in taking people on who might have like an example I can use and being highly confidential in this pressure injuries that other that other homes probably couldn't, didn't have the clinical skill. So we've been able to take those over, take those, those residents in and 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 fix them up, really. I mean, it's, it's as simple as that. So, so, yeah, we, we think that we've got just a better clinical protocol and risk management processes to help us to take those more, those residents with with more complex clinical needs as part of our admissions process, which is quite unusual. We have clinicians actually as part of admissions to evaluate that we can take those residents on safely and provide them the care we need. So for those five or six that I mentioned where we hadn't taken them on, it may have been that they presented simply too much risk to other residents, because we always have to consider the other residents when we take people on. And that might include advanced dementia where they simply weren't safe to be around others and they needed like a very special care dementia unit. So there's some examples as what I mean that we're prepared to take on the cases that a lot of others won't.
Thank you very much for that, Chris, for your candid answer. And I think it sounds like you must have some really wonderful staff that work with the organisation. It's actually really good to hear as well.
Like I said, workforce is a challenge. There's no doubt about it. Workforce is a challenge. I'm not understating that at any, any level. But what I do know is that we spend a lot of money and effort and time on on training and development. We have a whole clinical education team that does tour the regions and providing specialist clinical education to our staff. And we have a lot of other resources. And I think this is where I do really feel for the smaller regional operators. They don't have that big resource base to draw on. And that we've, that we enjoy and have built up over many, many years. So yeah, I really do feel for some of those regional providers and I'm just glad that we could help out in in this situation. Now, not always smooth sailing. I'm not, I always have one hand touching wood whenever I say things are going well because it is a very high-risk industry. Things go wrong and when they go wrong, they go wrong badly. But we try and do everything we can to manage that risk and ensure the safety and welfare of both the residents, the families and the staff.
Thanks, Chris. One call up to councillor Deputy Mayor Pong.
Yeah, I don't have a question. Just a quick comment. I'd just like to thank yourself and your staff for the turnaround that's actually happened in our community over the last few years. I was very much concerned what was happening in our age care facilities. The plan that you've got moving forward actually instills a lot of confidence. You're definitely thinking about are people on the waiting list, you know, looking to expand. So I think that instills a lot of confidence. Not that you've been, you didn't have to turn it around, but you're also forward thinking as well. Because you do give the community quite often, that's quite heartbreaking story. You know, people are losing all their lives, getting sent away and then they're in isolation. So knowing that you've got this process in place of expansion and being able to accommodate a few more people. It's very comforting. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your feedback. That's very kind and I'll pass that on because it has, it has been really, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna gild the lily. It has been really hard work. And it's taken both investment from the government and a lot of investment from ourselves, financial and people, resources and energy and attention and and a lot of stress, you know, it wasn't easy by any stretch, but we had a mantra that if it's not us, then who? And so what we can do is just do our best, manage the risk, manage the growth and and just keep the people of of Wiler at front of mind and and they're generally fairly good guiding principles. So that's what we'll keep doing.
Thank you very much, Chris. I think that brings our questions to an end. But thank you for your presentation. Certainly thank you and Helping Hand for being here. You've certainly made a difference and the future looks fantastic. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Justin. And I'll leave you to your meeting. Thank you very much for your time and sorry I couldn't be there in person. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Here's your one. On the top. Item thirteen, committee reports, 13.1 Corporate Services, 13.1.1 Order and Risk Committee Meeting. We have a recommendation there. Councillor Torey, you're moving. Do you have a second there? Councillor Sorry, I was reading yours. Deputy Mayor Pong. I'll put them up. Those in favour? Okay, Harry. Thank you. Item fourteen, reports, council officers. Fourteen point one, obviously, the chief executive ordinary reports. You have a report there, fourteen point one point one. CEO, wish to speak for this.
Just briefly, the best report is just to confirm that the ALGA meeting, the ALGA is ALGA forum, which is around building community trust. Council traditionally has had two delegates in ALGA, the mayor and the CEO. That's given council professional government programme. We did just ask the question whether any other councillors wish to attend ALGA, noting that there is a cost associated with attendance, which was listed in the report. So whilst recommendations are listed there in terms of potentially endorsing other members to attend, it may well be that council doesn't move item number one. Also, in relation to the submission of motions, we're not aware of any submissions or motions that councillors may wish to put forward. We do have a little bit of time available before we need to put in motion. So if councillors don't have a motion, they, that doesn't mean we can't consider it a future meeting. With that, I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions? Anybody want to care to move? Officer, Deputy Mayor Pong?
Yeah. With this one, I find it a little bit hard to court number one, section one. Just because unless there's exting circumstances that we're not aware of, I think having our CEO and our mayor represent Wiler is adequate. If there was some reason why our mayor couldn't attend, absolutely have a proxy. But considering the cost, I think it's probably a bit more effective if we keep it more to local forums and then work to go for a bit more bang for buck situation. But that is just my personal opinion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pong. Councillor Torey, I'd support my colleague, the Deputy Mayor. I feel exactly the same way as you do. I'm just afraid that this might fail the pub test and it could be seen as a bit of a junket. I think in the past with the mayor and and the CEO, I've gone, I think that's very shouldn't stay. Thank you, councillor. Any further comments? I was not told, yes, councillor Borla.
I had a motion that I'd like, yes, for the council's consideration. Yeah, I just share what that motion might be.
Thank you, councillor.
So the ALGA provider report for all councils to consider a best practice in relation to more, not less discussions around major issues affecting residents through formal and informal channels between council administration and residents. Is that too fast, Michelle? Okay.
So this checking, so that was a potential motion and that you were going to put forward to ALGA?
Yes, so referring to part two of the recommendation, I'd like to include.
Sorry, I was expecting you to be addressing part one.
My apologies. Yes, so just to clarify, yes, I prepare with Deputy Mayor Pong and councillor probably part one. Part two, I'd like to submit a motion for discussion.
Shall we perhaps address point one first? Second, number one, would somebody care to move a motion? Right, I do. My boss here, don't need one.
Unless someone is nominating to attend.
Unless um someone is nominating um to attend, you don't need to have any motion in relation to one. If there's no motion to move, it will stay that the mayor and the CEO, as is custom practice, will attend. Um so you don't need to deal with item one if there's um no need to do so.
Thank you, CEO. All right. Getting back to the motion.
Yes. So I I'm not sure who to refer it to, but that Alga, uh so the Australian Government Association Provider Report for all councils to consider in relation to more, not less for the community discussion around major issues affecting residents through formal and informal channels between council administration and residents, full stop.
Yes, Mr. CEO. Just as a a suggestion, let's call council to determine. Um given the nature of that item, I'm wondering whether, as supported, you have been working with the administration uh in terms of coming up with some wording and the reports for what you're seeking. Um I'm just gonna suggest that looking at the words that are there, make sure there are already in place, and it's probably not something that Alga likely want to do on a national level. Um not big against what you're putting forward, but it makes a little bit of um fine checking to work out what you're trying to achieve so that we can then present it in a format that um council consider. So if you're okay with that suggestion, we can take um the that grant motion offline and work with you and then bring it back to a future council meeting.
Yeah, that that sounds fine to me. Yeah, take behind it. Just trying really to draw on a one a national resource if there's best practice elsewhere outside SA to just try and walk from that. Um but absolutely, I'm I'm happy with what you just suggested there.
Yes, thank you for that, councillor. So we'll certainly take that on board. So the question, we shall move on. Fourteen point three corporate services ordinary reports fourteen point three point one, the monthly budget report, January twenty twenty four. You have a report for a corporate recommendation. Does anybody have any questions which we can direct appropriate staff? Councillor, we're about forty point three point three. Sorry, I'm on page. Thank you, councillor. But any other requests? If not, somebody care to move the recommendation? Sorry, councillor. Question mark. Take that, councillor talk. I'll put the motion that's in favour. Okay, Harry. Thank you. Fourteen point two point two, the budget review, twenty three, twenty four, quarter two. You have a recommendation, again, before I ask for the mover. Does anybody have any questions or do any officer want to speak to it or take it as read?
Councillor Simpson. I have a few questions. Now, you take them, help me, page thirty three. We have additional costs incurred in real-time junior soccer. Have we, as an organisation, approached the senior soccer group to help pay for these costs that they could incur?
Through the chair, no. The Junior Soccer Association is, as we understand, is separate from the senior of soccer, seniors. So we have not approached any other soccer club or the senior league to contribute to the costs of the juni- or the juniors.
Okay. Further down the page, it has this positive cost for hard waste and illegal delivery. I'd like to think that we did more posting in our website or on our Facebook page of what the cost council is for illegal dumping. Because we keep saying it's a it's a new issue, but we don't, on a monthly basis, it's costing a grand year or whatever. It might embarrass people to say it's not going.
Thank you, councillor. Deputy Mayor Pong.
I've got a couple. On page thirty eight and thirty nine, can I please ask council to patch away carols when it's related sponsorship? Actually, they're very two separate events with separate lot of sponsorship proposals. Um I think it's a little bit misleading to the Waila Show Society's sponsors because that seven thousand dollars in sponsorship was just for the pageant. So it's referred to on page thirty eight and thirty nine. So just asking if we can have that, please, removed. Especially for the sponsors that did sponsor the carols, they were very different run events. Um on page thirty nine, again, increase in um illegal dumping and hard waste. Just wondering if we can get a breakdown of the differences in that. What is actually hard waste value and what is the illegal dumping value? Because if hard waste is going up, it means debt and first services are picking it up. It's the cost of the community um versus what is the illegal dumping cost. So I would just like a bit of a breakdown on that. Um and on page thirty nine, uh it's also relating to the junior soccer. Did that value also include um the the new dog park that has just been built out at Geberly Park um as well as the uh shed that's soon going to be put up? I didn't see any costings in there. So my presumption was that put together, but it might be a bit more transparent if we actually break that down a little bit.
Yes, so with that one, we've tried it. It is, there's two components, but the way we tried it with one project because the effect of what we're doing is to allow junior soccer to move. So yeah, there is a cost to build the new shed and then the cost to fence the other area. Um so we can get the breakdown, that's fine, but we've sort of, our thinking is that the project itself is to be able to move junior soccer out of Geberly. We have to move the T9s as like a secondary um item to allow that to happen. So that's why. And and with this budget, um so council had approved the budget, yeah, probably almost two years ago now, to help with that process. And so that's why we're bringing that back here where that was an estimate at the time of what that might look like. Now, we've got these health costings of the shed and fencing. That's why we're seeing that there's a higher cost than that of the general um allocation with what council companies.
Absolutely. And I understand that there's there's costs associated with that. Um but also wasn't aware that there was going to be a whole new dog park built. Just thought it was going to be a fenced area. Um so that was actually a little bit of a surprise as well.
Councillor Simpson, not, I I pull it the rest. I apologize first. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh just on on page thirty nine still, um the cost related to the Economic Development Advisor, fifty thousand dollars. So this is an unbudgeted item after council's rejoined the RDA. Can you just unpack that a little bit further?
Yes, so we've um previously had a professional services agreement in place um with um to engage Steve Harrison as our economic or chief economic advisor. Um he'd been working with it some time. Um due to personal health issues, he's um had some time off. Um but he was still on our books and um late for over the last financial year, he started doing work for us. Um in line with that contract that was already in place, we'd been paying for his time and services. However, with the council decision to return to the RDA, the budget that we had available for economic development is now fully committed to our membership subscription to the RDA, um which we've had to pay. So um we've now ceased um having um Steve Harrison providing our services. So it's a timing issue um reflected of the change from us sort of going our own way and doing our own thing to now being part of the RDA.
Councillor Simpson. Page thirty five, airport, we lost, we lost some funds through the airport system. Are we having regular meetings with orders because of their airfares and their cancellation? That's probably reflecting on what's happened with our airport income, the fact many people not flying because of the cost of the debt, which are. And we have a shortfall of hundred and thirty seven thousand pounds for the project. Mr. Here. Okay, one page.
That's what we do. You've got two questions, councillor. We'll do with the first question.
Okay.
At the airport. Oh, we have a meeting.
Uh so you, uh fancy question. Yes, we do meet with Qantas periodically. Um uh we've been raising our escalating concerns about the the cost of flights and uh for certainly at certain periods of time, the number of cancellations were the variables that they had. Um we received assurances at the time um from Qantas that it was sort of extraordinary circumstances that led to uh some of those uh flights being canceled or delayed, uh which they've now, uh we understand, have have rectified and got on top of. The issue of the price um is going to be an ongoing discussion. Uh essentially, they will use a supply and demand type model to determine how much of a ticket is worth on any particular flight. Um and there are some flights, it's cool from Waila, that are very popular. Uh so high demands, limited supply, including for those flights, um there will be an increase in uh ticket prices. Um they continue to assure us that if you actually book far enough in advance, um you can still get um prices that are a bit higher. Um however, a lot of people that travel don't all till three months out. Um they typically want to a couple weeks' time or a couple days' time. So it's going to be an ongoing challenge for us. Um we know that there is now um increase in the state government level around this particular issue. Um we did try to, like government, back when we were talking to federal government to try and, you know, leverage our position. Um uh probably twelve months ago, and at that time, didn't get much um um support from the state because of his, the federal government, which do censor the security screening costs. However, obviously the state, there's an interest as well in terms of the cost of travel, um given what we all had over the weekend, um or yesterday, in terms of the increased number of people that will be coming in and out of the house and the unreached, that's a more paid program. So um there's no complaints. Yes, we are having ongoing discussions. How that's going to resolve, however, like Qantas in the short term, like um like people are liking that, um having those conversations. Okay, thank you. On page thirty nine, we have a costing tax of sixty thousand dollars due to cost income, the closure of electric network. We are, I don't know what that is, why it's the answer, are we, are we wearing? Yes, so the next, I'm trying. Um this is a customer, a management fee. Um in a contract we shut the centre and they lose the income. Um that is the costing cost to track onto that. So about a hundred and fifty is the total cost. So we have, some of that is the cost of the YMCA, they shut for a while and they've still got to start, you know, some permanent stuff. They have to manage their casual um staff working. Um but it's also the cost that we've incurred to run some of the programs. Um and that is the centre during the time of the part of ECO, part of managing that community expectations. So that cost is actually the actual programs that are trying to um from some cost to um doing groups, those things still manage that, the YMCA, and some of those costs are going. Uh yeah, thanks for my mate. It's good. Obviously, you asked how the budget protection was placed on the level here and generating income. We're obviously hoping to manage the costs as well, like we can generate from the cost to run the centre. Um so that's the contract.
And that's not least, hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars cost to buy for same work, all in the, for all the contractors. And surely that's the contract problem. If we, we picked that top out, we said, no, the cost, you really don't look.
And they, oh, that, that, oh. Ends on the name of issues, you find. We found some very, um I haven't got through some issues that were found on site there. So when they started digging the foundations flipping and it um slapped, they found actually an old cavern, a huge cavity under the earth. Um and then they had to get an archaeologist out, the names of the site, to um where to pay the, an archaeologist to come in, uh because of the historical nature of the site. And I was worried that there was significant asbestos potentially in that. Um it turned out it was an old, um it was the original water tank that had been ripped up, probably a hundred years old, something of that nature. So that was quite assuming, also, that I, I, um it's not something to expect. And there's no way a contractor is taking on risks like that, um you know, contract. Um the other big one has been just dealing the power out there, that um that the the biggest site, um the power loading just, um it was, you know, it's one of those things, it's expected that the power that you can run to a site will be sufficient. Um unfortunately, upgrading them to a higher, better facility, the the current um transformer, they just couldn't actually handle it. And so they pay fifty or thousand for a, for an upgraded transformer. So just something unexpected, you know, they're not normally things you expect to find on the site. Um it's not, you know, the things that would normally be paid or three, normal contracts. Um risk, it's just, it's, yeah, way outside the ordinary.
Thank you for that. Good. Thank you for the motion. Any further questions? Yes, councillor, order.
I'm not sure if this is the right area to ask this, but in regards to the airport, what's the, there was a reference to um councils investigating other issues to solve the problems. What what are they? I'm not sure what they are. I don't know if this is the right time to ask that question, whether I've missed my spot. But in regards to the airport, there was a a report, and I just, I snapped out of the the quote, and it said the council's investigating other alternatives, but it didn't specify what they were. So just wondering whether you can just build a bit around that of what what's happening to, because it's obviously the order, order and risk committee are on to it. And yeah, it's just an over the hank concern.
Yes, so given the um the airport continues to make a loss, um there's two or three things that we've been looking at. One is the cost of actually delivering the service that we provide out there. So um Grant and his team have been doing some work with um the um a company that actually provides the security screening, looking at things like rostering practices, um uh timing of when people are there, et cetera, to try and uh potentially reduce the cost that we're incurring for security screening. Um I might get um Grant to add a little bit more shortly. So um we've been looking at the costs from an operational point of view. Um we do have a BO currently reviewing the airport as part of our service reviews. Um so they will look at, you know, what service do we provide? How do we provide a service? Um is it essential? Is there a another way of delivering the service? They, it's being picked up and looked at also through through that um lens. And then the third um lens, which I personally believe is the one that will have the most um impact in terms of the um the net cost to council uh for the airport, is to look at um other commercial uses of the airport to increase the revenue that is generated um by the airport outside and beyond the passenger um letters that we get for. for uh, the A P, A T P, the um, the regular passenger transport that the likes of Qantas does um, to, to our airport. So we, we are aware that there are multiple companies um, that are very interested in Waila for a number of reasons. Um, in terms of future commercial opportunities and interests. Um, unfortunately, they're probably a few years away, um, but we are looking at um, how we might also generate more revenue from the asset. Um, and I said there was reason, there is a fourth one. Um, the fourth one is to uh, get additional funding from either the federal government or the state government to either offset the cost or to augment the asset that we have uh, there. Uh, to either, for example, accommodate, but coming in or alternative planes coming in. Uh, uh, as is the case in other jurisdictions, like Western Australia, for example, speaking, uh, when we mentioned the um, back when dealing with this issue, uh, as a very high issue at that time. Um, regarding jurisdictions like Western Australia, where there are certain um, regions where the state government actually provide the subsidy to the cost of the transport or a um, movement in an hour of that, those people's sites. Um, our state government doesn't do that in Australia. That, that's something that we might encourage for in the future, particularly again with our messaging that we heard over the weekend, how important our airport is, not only for the project committee in our branch, but for the region, you know, a lot of people come from our airport, doctors, for example, that going to Cleveland Macau. Um, uh, you know, potentially even um, personal people, they use our airport light and drive to deliver their services in, in other locations. So um, as I said, um, briefly before, there's our a little bit more interest focus coming from the state government around um, our airport, given its um, significance and importance in that quarter regional context as well.
Thanks very, very much for the thirty thousand, well, beauty, unintended. Um, but if we can land on these ideas, it's sort of like how, in the way that we look at eighty two units coming on board very soon. And it seems like it's in the constant reaction phase. I, I sort of always have felt like this is the elephant in the room, like this is a, a behavior issue when we, when Rex, um. And I just feel like, is there anything more that we can be doing now, when everything's always urgent? But given the nature of the trouble too, while with the big expansion of this six hundred million dollar investment. Like, I just am still so surprised the state government isn't already doing that? And if there's anything more that please the council can be doing to, to progress that or expedite that or?
Okay, two responses. Um, the first one is that if you just think about the volume of people that are coming in and out of our city. Um, just in terms of simplifying the conversation, they'll need to be on a charter plane or not on a charter plane. So I think one thing that council can do is to try and be in those discussions that would be inherently impacted at some stage with the major corporates. Um, and either try and get line with Qantas in terms of who, who's blaming those people on and what's the price of work. That, that's one thing we can do um, um, at a sort of an operational level, to try and be part of those conversations. The other is um, to that, that broader piece um, about future commercial opportunities. Most of the commercial opportunities are going to require investment in the more infrastructure at the airport, um, particularly hangar. Um, and will be shed, so, you know, planes typically, you've got big items. Um, so you need lots of space. Now, hangar, um, at the airport is already on the capacity with the G A's. Our general location apartments have their, their planes already there. Um, so we're talking about a good investment in more assets into an asset that is currently not returning. Um, we need to build a business case and we'll need to look at getting some, you know, using the language. Common presence, some off-aid agreements, or some agreements in place with potential purpose of, that those facilities, either in terms of owner-up, if I, or leave. Um, so we'll need to work up a business case um, to support the adjusted case of the investment. Given that we don't have the, the financial capability and in light of the commentary coming from the Order of Risk Committee. We're also not proposition with this new assets, given the situation we've already got. So it's most likely that what we might end up doing is actually packaging this up and uh, working with the state government and going to the federal government and having this there as one of our precinct partnership proposals. And actually getting the federal government, state government, private sector, uh, investing in some of that, that commercial infrastructure that's needed. Um, as opposed to council having to pay, we don't have the, the capacity. So unfortunately, when I, when you talk about this area of work, um, to work up, you know, that business case, talk to all the relevant stakeholders, and back to what we heard from Brian Strawbridge tonight. You know, that, that is a short, a few pieces of work on top of all the other few pieces of work that we've already got, and we don't have the resources. So we're either gonna need to get someone else to fund the resources, and that's where again the precinct partnership approach might be a suitable. Uh, funding stream because they have, um, using my language, a design development concept, uh, base, which you can get up to five million dollars to design developments and documentation, separate from then their, their second stream, which is constructional implementation, which you can get up to fifty million dollars. Um, again, just managing people's expectations. There are councils right around Australia. Councils, including if that have got in precinct partnership proposals or working on their precinct partnership proposals. There will be one of, some of the councils other in Australia, six hundred odd councils who are potentially going to the federal government saying, we've got a great idea. Here's our, our idea, and we give us some money towards this particular project. Unlike six hundred and forty other councils, I think Waila's got a fantastic um, story to tell. Um, and I think we, we can put forward a, um, a really strong submission, but there's no guarantee that we will get that funding. Thank you for that, officer.
Right. Any further questions? Otherwise, I will look for a mover or secondor of a recommendation for our budget review twenty twenty three, twenty four quarter two. Do you have a mover? Councillor Simpson, seconded, Deputy Mayor Pond. I'll put the motion, those in favour, okay? Carry. Thank you. Out of my fourteen point two point four, the quarterly procurement report. Does anybody have any questions, officers, before I seek a mover? Councillor Simpson.
Page sixty six. Hundred and thirty seven, sorry, I'm on there.
I knew that, remember, I had a couple to ask. Thank you very much. Thank you. I don't know how long I can keep using it. That is an excuse, though. Fourteen point, my apologies, fourteen point two point three, the mid-year report twenty twenty three, twenty four. Do I have any questions of officers before I call for a uh, mover of the, of the recommendation? I don't see any re, yes, councillor Boarder.
Just a comment, just the animal management plan, it's just really interesting in a positive way. De-seeding twenty one dogs makes it more than a hundred puppies from being born, and that's due to the education program. I just think that's really fantastic that those puppies aren't born, um, less than the catch you've gotten, so it's be it. I think things like that, um, just pulling that out of the report, just to highlight it for those who might be watching and listening, that that's a very proactive initiative. That's clearly, that ripple effect is going to be beneficial, I sort of pointed out.
Thank you, councillor. Do no further questions or comments? Do I call for a mover of that recommendation? Move councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Westman. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against? Carry. Thank you. Out of fourteen point two point four, the quarterly procurement report. Yes, councillor Simpson.
Page sixty six, we've spent a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on a, on a consultant, because the staff, the staff are leaving. He said that advertised to start, and we look like finally raised that position yet?
Short answer, short answer, no. So whilst it's um, additional cost that basically um, would otherwise be salaries. So um, that's um, no, I've struggled with um, filling that role. Anything in sort of project management and infrastructure related, um, um, feels present because of what's happening in the private sector and what you've heard over the weekend. Um, we don't offer the salaries that, um, you know, good project managers or infrastructure people can get working on all of the major projects around the state. So we, we, we're going to continue to struggle to fill some of our roles.
Do we have any further stuff that we perhaps spend some money and plan up for, in our file to take that issue?
I'm happy to take this one. But I think as well with this one, with some of the conversations that have been had internally, that you think about some of the feedback from the audit committee. Um, if, if we are going to make the decision over, in the near future, to maybe cut back a little bit on our project spend, new and upgrade projects. The thinking is that if we, you know, this might be the decision that cuts back to us to not being required or being a lesser requirement if we've got less projects to deliver. So in some, in some ways, having it delivered in this model at the moment makes sense. It allows, it gives us that ability potentially to, to dial it back in the near future. Obviously, if we continue to have the same sort of project um, load, then we'll look again to, um, if, if recruit or upskill. But um, yeah, it does actually give us a little bit of flexibility at the moment.
And in the past, just a comment about the tours at Norton Park. We three nights, they were locked up, which is not great enough, I don't think, for anybody.
Yeah, great. We had that conversation about that one internally and um, how that, what had happened with that comment. So yeah, um, type it on. I just, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, councillor.
Councillor Popper. Um, page sixty seven, the installation of the C C T V, it's a civil building. Um, just in terms of, you know, how councils receive and value for money from this procurement. I don't understand how they are, because I read this as a, we're, we're continuing to use this system because we're, we're fixed into having to use it for storing retrieved vision. So is that a proprietary hardware software system? Can't we consider like a, you know, a system that's compatible with multiple components?
Yeah, look, we could certainly, can look at a different system. The nature of IT, as you know, sometimes. By building more systems, we just make our own lives harder and um, so often not better. With this, they're not, the cameras obviously have quite a significant camera system throughout this um, camera network throughout the city. Um, that works with the police. Um, and, and that's part of the issue with this one as well, that our camera systems are normally actually compatible with what got on site at the um, police station and some of the sufferers. So it, yeah, I guess with the way we look at it, as we look at this, um, if we didn't want to introduce more complication in the network, but happy to take that on. Just, I mean, because there's only going to be probably more of this investment in the future needed, during other commentary about other sites throughout the city. Um, yeah, yeah.
Just from my experience, it fits into a, like a proprietary system is a risk as well. I mean, that's, that provider could go defund and hardware as well. So it's just, this is more of a something for noting.
Yeah, I'm happy to investigate that one further and come back with some information on whether the wording is a little bit wrong, like whether it's not proprietary. But, but they're the best person to be delivering on that system, but so yeah, happy to.
Thank you for the question, councillor. If there are no further questions, do I call on a mover of the recommendation? Councillor Boarder, seconded councillor Toll. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against? Carry. Thank you. Out of fourteen point two point five, the financial internal control policy review. Take it thread before I call for a mover. Are there any questions to officers? If not, do you have a recommendation that councillor adopts the updated financial internal control policy? Move councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Boarder. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against? Carry. Fourteen point two point six, the implementation of service review and internal audit service. I have a report before, as usual, before I seek a mover. Does anybody have any questions or comments to officers? Otherwise, you will move the recommendation. No questions or comments. Councillor Popper.
Um, just in terms of the internal plan and proposed internal projects. So if the next, next year, there's a potential sixty to eighty four thousand dollars worth of projects. Can this compare against internal order costs at the moment?
Yeah, at the moment, we have a combined, sort of combined, like I thought, the service reviews and the internal order, and we'll manage. Um, manage that out of the budget, so we have a, it's unable to, it's between the two, um, compared. It's comparable, that's like, depending on what comes out of our, like, service review program next year. I, I want to sort these out, you know, I think this is a, if you do a program at the moment, of what they seem as outlined. Um, but it might be a bit pushed, things a little bit. I think originally we probably had two in the current plans here. But if we were with our current service review programs, so one got pushed, potentially one of those other three, just moved out to the next year. So uh, it's a sort of order that is my change a little bit.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Otherwise, somebody can move the two recommendations. Second councillor Boarder, seconded councillor Toll, those in favour, against? Carry. Thank you. Fourteen point two point seven, strategic management plans consultation, C E O. Um, given the, the fact that we're receiving the chair of the financial order committee meeting at, at our committee this evening. Um, I am going to suggest that we should withdraw this report, um, from council consideration tonight. Um, we have got a combined workshop with the audit committee scheduled for the fourth of March and um, the first of our budget discussions, and quarterly member workshop beginning next year. But um, there's been a comment from the chairman of the committee, we need to ensure that it's really strong alignment when our strategic plan, long-term management plan, asset management plan, and ultimately our budget. Uh, so with the um, the account, I think we draw this item and consider it, um, for those discussions. Um, let me give you a much, I'll support that. Okay, I should just go, just go. Thank you. Out of fourteen point three point eight, missions on writing review. We have a report there. That's quite a bit of action. For, I put those, if anybody, I'm ready, councillor, set up, does anybody out in councillor's, and also then, have any questions to comment? So I just thought, I mean, I thought, very full, like, a lot of times, you're pressing, like, all the way. But there, like, get, um, like, I thought, you know, it's true, Frank, you live, um, that is, you know, that is, you know. Yeah, okay, right, very, 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 thank you, councillor. Yes, my order. I saw other interactions with the community, is this the last of what's to proceed or kind of part of the course?
Uh, I did them.
Yeah.
I just figured one, yeah, about if we, not anything else, based on, yeah, if it was a local consultation at budget time, we've definitely got, uh, private. It doesn't, I've no idea. The right, this point.
Yeah, what, wasn't a lot of feedback, I guess, with the question, I was just observing, I just think I do. We all go through responses that came back from the community, not just typical, right, you go up, you guys, they're all, it was a, for our, really considered responses.
Yeah, I guess. I think there's not actually a huge number of responses, we're going to, it's only fourteen, and I, and I, we had a number of, had a large number of conversations with people, I thought, but, but coming in, but there actually has been a lot of engagement, I think, and it's not necessarily fully shown in the number of submissions, so, you know, a few more people that I spoke to, may have committed, um. But I think people gave it well, and actually, um, you know, this is a, I don't know, most of the topic, actually, an emotional topic. Um, but I think most conversations I've had have been very, very, like, they've been quite simple, like, really, and people really wanting to understand what's, what's being proposed, issues here. Um, and so it was, it was a very, it was actually fairly positive, I think, like, most of the, most of the conversations, obviously, information giving is always going to be the, bit of a litmus test, you know, that was it. That's the hard thing, you've got a lot of people who really want to ask a lot of questions and that can, you know, that can get out of hand a little bit quickly, but I think even that, you know, went pretty well and, and, you know, as I said in the report, I think even that night, the, the offline sort of individual conversations you have at the end of the, the stem didn't actually are really, really positive as well and people were able to get more informational, maybe get their question maybe want to ask in front of everyone else answered. Um, that's what I think, so the overall, I think the process would be good, as I said, less, less mission than I expected, but, like you said, I think the ones that we've received fairly, um, well put out, um, and, and like the report says, bring it down to sort of two key issues really, I think, I think most, yeah, there's some people who've said, I moved to Havel Bay, and I think we realised that that's off the table and, but that's not actually the conversation unfortunately. Um. Yeah, it's about the other things and really it comes down to, and as per the resolution, uh, the recommendations people for council, it's about, you know, let's go away and come back with a little bit more information, but you have to consider around those two key issues around the, the, you know, coastal, um, and real living sites and the, um, the tapping and how we implement tapping, so, um, yeah. From that, that was my sort of experience of the process of having spoken to lots of people.
Thanks for, um. Yes, councillor Tor.
Just a comment, I think the recommendations, given the feedback that we got, I agree, because I, as I was reading them, I was thinking, I want to know more about that too. I want to know how that will work, I want to know what, what, how this will look for me as a person who has to vote on how this ends up going. So I think it's a recommendation.
Well, we have, uh, recommendations there, would somebody care if there are no further?
I think.
Your councillor Tor's moving the recommendation and deputy mayor Pond has taken them, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Forty point two point nine, the local government elections and participant, participation review, which has come back to us, uh, from our previous discussions. Does anybody have a question or comment before I seek a mover? If not, we'll take it as read, if somebody cared to move the recommendation. Move deputy mayor Pond and second to councillor Westman, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Over fourteen point two point ten, social media policy. I'll pop these. Do I get the set there?
That's wrong. Yeah.
Yeah, yes. Look, you. No, not yet. No. See, we can do better than my confidence. The social media policy. Does anybody have any questions or comments before I seek a mover? Councillor Tor.
My point, I'm, how I do this, because I, I've done meetings for a short while, maybe a bit of a discussion about this. Is that how I do it?
Two, that's good enough, yes.
Fifteen minutes, ten minutes?
Fifteen minutes and we're. Yes, obviously you second that. Can do that, thank you, well, your life flash. Uh, stake of the councillor Simpson, I'll put that, those in favour, yes, right, fifteen minutes. Councillor Tor.
Would you like me to start since I'm the one who's, uh? For a minute, I'm just getting concerned, um, having read it, uh, I feel like it's a bit contradictory. Um, on the one, one hand, it's telling us guidelines for, um, it talks, the intro talks about it being a way to connect, share thoughts and ideas, recognizing that social media is an important platform for engaging meaningful to wait in the occasion and then when you go on to some of the, um, other bits in it, 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 I feel like it's very restrictive. I understand completely that when we are, that we're not to be, um, feedback making opinions that are councillor opinions. On the one hand, it says, if we're going to respond to something, it will, um, opinion and on the other hand, it says, don't like anything that could be in any way seen as anything extremely helpful or anything that councillor has any kind of, um, investment in or any kind of, um, what are the exact words, sorry.
Yeah, I believe you.
Yeah, I just feel like, on the one hand, it's saying, if you're properly making, make sure people know that it's your opinion, don't make it council's. Which we completely understand, but on the other hand, it's saying, basically, don't say anything that's got, that, that anybody can see as, uh, anything that has to do with what you're doing on council, which I think is really contradictory, saying, you know, you're saying it's a way of reading or to work, communication sharing. I don't know how people feel about that. I, literally, I read it and I felt like I had given up my control.
Yep, yep. So I'll do an initial response and then, um, show my, like, so, I, look, everything you definitely fully understand. This is a really challenging, um, uh, issue for councils generally. Um, with the first words about social media being an important platform to be able to engage, share news and the like. That is obviously a very correct statement. That is in the context of councils', um, uh, social media channels being used to engage the community about council business. So in terms of the use of social media, we acknowledge that social media has got a, an important role for councillors, the entity, to be able to communicate and have that two-way sharing of information. Um. The wording then goes on to say, the expression of councils, then the organisation, the entities knew or something, needs to come from the organisation. Not from individual members, um, whether they're individual members of, um, the elected member group or individual members of the staff. They come from the councillors, the entity, and, you know, making comments or sharing news on a matter, we need to be very clear. Um, that is, this is the entity that is interacting and communicating, uh, with, with, um, the community. We understand that as individuals, you all have views on different matters, uh, and opinions. Uh, but when you do express your view or, um, on, on something, you do need to very clearly say that this is a person, an opinion of Sharon Ford, not expressing a view, um, for, on or behalf of the council. Now, it's very easy to say that, the challenge that we all have is that when you walk out of this room, you don't take off this, um, this hat that says, you, Sharon, are now talking to the community as a councillor. There is no magical hat. And unfortunately, whether you say something on behalf of council or related to council business, or you do something completely separate in your own right as a, a business, um, person in your case, people will see what you're saying and be just purely because you hold the office of councillor, they think that you are speaking, um, as, as a councillor. If, oh, it's, um, I was going to say two o'clock in the morning, uh, even if it's, um, nine o'clock on a, on a Saturday night and, uh, you're at a party and you do a Facebook post. Unfortunately, it is part of being councillor that you, you don't clock on or clock off as a councillor, so every time you make a comment, even if it's a personal comment, pick still say, say your comment with your role as councillor. And that's where the, the challenge lies. So, um, we, we've come up with the, the policy, uh, which is before you write the guidelines that inform how internally, uh, we manage our social media, and that is very descriptive because it's our, essentially the guidelines for the staff that are managing our, our, um, our sites. And, and we understand that councillors want to have a voice, slash, as individuals, you want to have a voice. We just need to work out how that you, you do that without, unfortunately, um, uh, getting caught in whatever happens. If you don't mind us using as an example, you know, Tammy, Deputy Mayor, recently put a really simple one-line response on a council, uh, Facebook post, which was thought to be responding to a question or a comment that someone in the community had. Probably thought that that would meet their requirements. It automatically generated another question, you know, when are we going to be consulted about this issue, I think was the, the point in the case. So we are trying to actually, um, support and protect you as councillors, because if you do make any comment, particularly if it's on council's, um, website, so the policy is very clear, you should not be making any comments on council channels. Um, that's very clear and if, if you do, you, you are reaching the behavioural standards. Uh, and there are consequences. If you make comments in your own right in other forums, other people's pages and the like, you can do that, but just be mindful of that. Um, you can't take your councillor at all. I've talked a long time and I've probably taken up some of the fifteen minutes, um, and might need to stand at that. I just wanted to try and explain that dichotomy between you as the individual and you as the councillor and how it's easy to separate them. Did you want to add anything to that or?
No, I think that's, um, that's a very good summary of, of the purpose. And obviously ensuring that everything that's coming through the council page is consistent with what we've said previously and making sure that, you know, we're all aligned. Um, that if you want to comment, um, it could be slightly different to the message that we've given previously, so just obviously trying to make sure that it's coming in properly. We are all in order and from the same message, but then certainly on your own pictures, I think you're in your, thank you. Issue and you've got, I think all on your own pages have, like, these are my own views, not those of the council, you've got in your profile, but that's an important thing, so that whenever anyone goes onto those page, they know that, right, this is the view of the council, like, and of the actual council. So just trying to make all of their, their interests and keep that separation.
What, what's due within time, councillor Border?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Yeah. Councillor Border, and, and I think the, that, that description, and I'll wager that in regards to the official Facebook, uh, the council Facebook page, so that came through well and, well and truly. Do we have that individual voice under this, like, anything in there that restricts us? And if you use this local example, that there are a number of key, while the positivity, while the neighbours, while the, uh, community notice board groups. And yesterday is a prime example, where everyone's hearing the hydrogen NSA post, it's getting, um, shared five times in each of those groups and there's various conversations happening at different times. And the nimbleness for us to be able to comment, is there anything that you feel restricts that, um, in this proposal? Or are we free to read the Bible of that post? And with, it sounds as though the intention with the cohesive group that we have here is to support the official line of the council. Is there anything that would restrict that or have I missed something?
No, I think if you're, particularly if it is relating to anything from a, a council point of view and you're making it clear that that's your, your viewpoint and you're not representing council, I think that's fine. Um, so, so, yeah, if you're not, it's not like you are the spokesperson of council in that page. And I think that is quite fine to be making your views on the, you know, supportive or this is great for the community or something that links to what, what council's involvement in, but you've, you've given that, that, you know, caveat that this is my personal view and I'm not saying this on the, the outsides, I think that's, that's completely fine.
If I could just add to that, um, whilst your Facebook post may say, this, this is my, my personal views, um, what gets expressed on, you know, through these Facebook pages is my own. I would go to the extra trouble of putting the extra words in to your post. When you do the Facebook post, it might be just a one-liner, but, you know, this is the views of me, not the council views. Um, makes you, like, orecule, that, um, if you're going to make comments, particularly if it's got anything to do with council, if you put intention, when you say something, the people will still think that you're talking to them as a councillor. Um, my, I know it's hard, um, and given the nature of the site, and I know not everyone will, uh, support my view, but I would actually strongly encourage you to not post, even if you see a whole heap of misinformation on some site. My suggestion is that you don't post, um, even though you've got good intention, um, because, um, I, I would challenge you respectfully that. Sometimes I think you're probably wasting your time trying to break misinformation. Justin. By such the view of. Justin Collins, not the C O S.
So, Justin, you mentioned that there's consequences, you don't follow this policy, what are they?
So if you do, um, uh, post on councils' social media channels, which is contrary to our policy, that is the breach of the behavioural, uh, standards. Um, uh, I don't remember the, the, the details fully, I'm prepared, but, um, in the first instance, um, there will be, uh, um, uh, the main contact that you do confirm that you've reached it. If there's a, a pattern of breaches, it could result in a referral law, um, for, uh, independent, independent investigation. Um, and, uh, to be dealt with by the, um, behavioural standards board. Um, so we, we obviously don't want to go there, um, there should be no reason we have to go there. Um, so hopefully we don't find ourselves in that situation, but it can, you know, unfortunately, you know, the, what I didn't also mention, uh, in my preamble, is either intentionally or unintentionally, if you make a comment on social media, people will know that you're a politician. They will think that they're, you know, you're potentially looking at, you know, lecturing or, or politicking, um, your view. Um, and even though you've got potentially really good and honest intentions in your post, unfortunately, people will see it in the context of, um, lecturing and, you know, what connections are like. I'll be impressed, we'll still be. We're getting close to our fifteen minutes, so just, councillor Border, I can take up the remaining couple of minutes, or just, just one of them. I think it's a, it is a fine line to walk, I think there is, it, it, I perceive it to be a, a net positive, that there are risks and there are challenges. But I sort of like with the group that we have here, with the intent that I sent amongst the group, that we will want to back up what you're doing and reinforce it and essentially, um, be part of the explanation arms, if, if it's looked at like that, um, in our own private, private way. Just, yeah, so I think it's worth, it's worth navigating through very carefully. And this is a really timely point because I think we're becoming more active and, and more confident after over twelve months of being on council, but we're just seeing stuff that's just practically inaccurate. It starts to feed on it. It starts to feed on itself, um, and whilst we can just ignore, um, my respectful challenge question is, would we not be missing an opportunity to discuss something? Um, or, or is it perhaps in certain situations, just down to our judgement to go, you know what, it wouldn't matter what is said, it wouldn't matter if you said, look, the toilet's going to be played with gold and no electricity across the community, they're still going to argue about something, um. Um, yeah, so, um, one response to that is, um. The question will be why, you know, Peter Boarder responds to this, uh, as opposed to Bill Simpson. Um, so, um, in terms of the politics, even though you've got a good intention, that you're just trying to nip someone in the bud. Um, given the environment that we, we work in and social media as it is, people will say, why is it that, you know, Peter Boarder is always making comments, you know, why haven't we heard from, um, Zeta Westminster? But, so again, what individually you think you're trying to do the, a good thing, I'm going to suggest that maybe it's, um, may have many, many consequences. And to that point, the second thing I wanted to raise is that we had, um, Mark Still come in and work with the group some time ago around, you know, the venue and, you know, the vision, uh, for this, this group and, you know, what the charter was for this group. What I'm going to suggest now, because this, this is the nature of this particular subject, is that I think it would be good to get Mark Still to come back and actually work with the elected member group and have a conversation, you know, is there, um, collective, uh, support for. Just you, Peter, um, Paul Peter to, uh, on, on behalf of the elected member group, you see something, um, in a particular post, or should it be, should it be Sharon, should it be Bill? Maybe have that discussion as a group, because whilst you might, you might be doing, um, you know, the positive, um, some of your fellow councillors might be, well, you know, why, why is Peter, um, you know, addressing this issue when, you know, I should be addressing the issue because I'm, you know, equally interested or passionate about this subject? So, maybe instead of elongating this conversation because it's fifteen minutes, uh, I suggest that they take that offline and have a session with Mark Still and actually unpack that more about what do you want as councillors in terms of how you might either share that link or, or support. Uh, comment in, in, in different forums, um, to try and nip things in the bud. If we wish to continue any discussion, you need to extend the fifteen minutes.
Yeah, can we extend this for? It just, just quickly, so sharing, sharing.
So, those in favour?
So, sharing social media posts for all, so sanction council, um, whatever, the things on one of the neighbours and stuff like that, is that a breach?
Uh. I'm not sure it's going to be a direct breach, but if you go back to why is it that you're actually sharing a council post?
It's on the factual stuff I've hidden.
Yeah.
This is my, so my, on your council page.
I think that's a good, particularly whatever they're inaccurate about is already been mentioned on our pages. I think that's a good way to be, then you're presenting the actual official council position on what we said and helping educate them and, you know, spifle that, that negativity or that, um, misinformation. I think that's a completely fine way to do it, so, um, yeah, because that, then you're, you're actually putting forward council position that's already there, that's helping inform them. Also perhaps, um, you could point them towards us and say, if you have comments or questions of council regarding this, you know, please direct it to their, you know, our official page. Um, and also let us know, you know, maybe it's something that, uh, you know, we can do, a post on as we did, you know, with, with the mayor, um, with his mayor's desk, we talked about the various questions about different parcels of state government land, because that's happening on all of the different sites. We're able to address that on, on our page, so that's another way is to let us know what you think that issue is with and we can try and quickly nip it where it's appropriate. Um, sometimes we also don't want to take scuttlebutt, turn it into a bigger issue on our page, or it might just be, you know, the small group that's making a big issue of it on, on certain other sites. Um, and certainly, I think using if there's existing council information, then, then putting that in those forums is a really good way to try and use it.
And I just, um, wear the red flag, I, um, and I'm not, I'm not. But, but just in light of, if you do that, you've been one, uh, one, you might think, right, twenty-five more questions coming to you, that you just responded to twenty-two, and you've got twenty-five questions coming to you. What are you going to do with those twenty-five questions, you're going to sit silent and say, well, those twenty-five people, why, why aren't you responding to my comment? Or why you do? Uh, so, I'm just, just caution you, um. Possibly if I have good intent, you could, this way.
I think we're missing out on opportunities as well, um, just for example, Tracy, thirty-five years of service, we would love to congratulate her as well, um, so it's, it's been blocking us, you know, you see all the staff commenting on it. Well done, well done, thirty-five years of service, yeah, it's, it's a fine line, but it's, we're, we're very respectful, we've got very positive things coming out and, um. Especially our three naughty kids sitting here that have been busted recently, um. We have the best intentions in our heart, we don't want to cause any issue and, um, on behalf of the three, sorry.
I just, just my final comment is I think that there is so much, if it's all worked correctly, if you, you want to say, you share, so I share the council post in that, that, what it makes. I share that to my page and people comment and they say, it's happened, it's about. We vote to pay whatever, I think the benefit of that far outweighs the potential. And that's my opinion, I think, um, responding and making sure that people.
And in my opinion, we have made a comment, so, so, I think, I think I've got, just, just to say, uh, the motion of the board would think exactly to, to, where is the evidence or what is the evidence, is there a blueprint for more discussion? I'm personally thinking is a good idea, you have to just think correctly, but if that motion would be referred to Mark as well, that'd be great. But, thank you. Unless we're extending that for another five minutes, we will resume. Yeah. So, but again, hopefully return to normal meeting procedures. I just seem to red light, councillor, it's my short mission, it's a problem, unfortunately I can still see it. Move councillor Boarder, seconded councillor Todd, we go back into the complete procedures. Thank you. Put the most in heaven. Right, we have a recommendation, we've had a lot of discussion, if somebody cares to move that recommendation. Councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Boarder, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Carry on. Thank you. Forty point three, City Grove, we have nil reports, forty point four, City Infrastructure, nil report, fifteen, Information and Decision Reports, nil. Sixteen, there's motion, nil, seventeen, Questions Without Purpose, nil, eighteen, Questions Without Purpose?
Okay, it's end of the day. The very, uh, they've tried to, I, I just. I believe it should have some, I think, you have to contact the council. At the moment, people are going to either fly back to their, when you use it on this, and get this, I, this, the name. But, because somewhere active to the webpage, it probably makes life easier, we can grab the sincere problem or real problem, the contact one. And, yes, but.
As. Thank you councillor. Councillor Boarder. Like, on that note, streaky day, I saw their website just recently, uh, I came to the one that, um, they had the councillor's name at the bottom of the homepage, name and numbers of the councillor, so it was the homepage of the council, with the councillor's name and numbers at the bottom, just to add that. Also, I'd like to, I think this is a question that perhaps could evolve into a motion, coffee with a councillor, participation at the shopping centre on a Friday before a council meeting, the agenda comes out, we have a few chairs, a couple of tables, a couple of really keen councillors, a wonderfully dedicated staff member, uh, as security, and a talking point. Uh, I'm thinking Colin, um, anyway, uh, but no, but it, it was seriously, but something like that to, to lighten it up, to bridge the gap, not just the PR, although that would be a great use of it as well. But to genuinely meet the community where they're at, not to try and hide and just do a little thing, get a photo and go, but to genuinely have a discussion, be candid, be approachable, really to bolster the social media and online presence, to have that physical presence as well. Because a lot of the criticism comes from people that don't know who we are, that don't know how they can contact us. And that's, I think, where personally, where I'm speaking on my, on my own behalf, but I know it's shared by a few others as well, is to reach out to the community and not just always expect them to contact us. So, coffee with a councillor is my point, um, whether that moves into a motion, that the two councillors and a staff member, maybe the motion would be something like that, can, can administration put a report to us about having a, a schedule of once a month and booking some dates, where we get the green little appointment in our calendar? With an allocated staff member and we put ourselves on a schedule, self-nominate, um, how's that sound? Do you, seeing you raised that initially as a question, I noticed if that would be referred to the CEO or administration to come back with, uh, a brief report and the right board? That would be wonderful, thank you. Thank you councillor. Councillor Robbiter?
The only comment I would make about, um, what councillor Boarder said, is not everybody will be able to participate, not all councils, councillors will be able to participate in that forum.
Yep. Acknowledged, thank you. Any motions without purpose? No red light, so I'll move on quickly. On that note. We now come to the end of the open section of the meeting, we do have one confidential item, so would somebody care to move at that second? We take a ten minute, fifteen minute, right? Ten or fifteen?
Ten.
Ten? Mayor Deputy Mayor Pond, seconded councillor Robbiter. Robbiter? Ah, it's me.
It's me.
Yeah, it's me. Go on back to Robbiter, thank you. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Carry on. Thank you, see you back in then. That will be precisely quarter two. Somebody cares to move and second, move councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Boarder. That we go into confidential. Sorry, come back in, yeah, come in. I'll put that motion, those in favour, against. Now can I please have a mover that we go to the confidential? Councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Westman, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against. Carry on. Thank you.